Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 6, 2021. I'm Heather Pathley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's April 6, 2021 regular meeting being conducted remotely where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council chambers will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zielinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels 189 and 190 and available at manistetv.org. City Council and city staff will have video and audio available for this meeting. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. Mayor Zielinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. We'll call the meeting to order. Please take the roll.
As I call your name, please state the location from which you are attending the meeting, just for council members only. Councilmember Bachmann.
Councilmember Bachmann here, reporting from Kissimmee, Florida.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here, reporting from the City of Manistee.
Mayor Zielinski.
Here, I'm in my home in the City of Manistee in the County of Manistee, Michigan.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here, from Manistee.
Mayor Protem Schmanski.
Good evening. Joining you from my home in Manistee, Michigan, Manistee County.
Councilmember Grabowski.
I'm here. I'm at 1235 Cornell Street, Manistee.
Okay. And Councilmember Martin Panik is not with us this evening. City Manager.
Here, in my office at City Hall in City of Manistee.
City Attorney.
Here.
Deputy Clerk.
Here.
There's some feedback. DPW Director.
Here.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Grabowski, you're gonna need to turn your computer, your iPad on now and hang up your phone. Okay. Sorry about that. Finance Director.
Here.
Police Department. Oh, you're muted.
You're muted, Doug.
Advanced City of Manistee. I'm at the office in Manistee, Michigan.
Fire Chief.
Here, at City Fire.
And City Engineer.
Here, City of Manistee.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Each person in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It is very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background, like televisions and all kinds of audio should be muted. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll move on to the next person in line. Meeting discussion topics for those who don't have agenda tonight are: On the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes, cash balance, revenue and expenses, consideration of ordinance 21-12 to extend the duration of provisional permits granted under Chapter 866 and provisional licenses granted under Chapter 867 of the City of Manistee, Michigan Cordified Ordinance. Notification regarding next work session, consideration of proclaiming April as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, consideration of holding a run, the Pier 5 K Run Walk on Saturday, August 14, 2021, from 8:30 PM to 11:00 PM, the race would take city streets from Veterans Memorial Park West to the Fifth Avenue Pier around the Lighthouse and then return to Veterans Memorial Park. Other agenda items tonight are: Consideration of ordinance 21-13, consideration of ordinance 21-09 to amend Chapter 1482, residential rental properties of the City of Manistee, Michigan Cordified Ordinance, consideration of approving a resolution supporting an update to a countywide park and recreation plan, consideration of granting an easement to consumer energy to allow an installation of a new service line at 440 River Street, a report from the City of Manistee Housing Commission, and introduction to the fiscal year 2020, 2021, 2022 budget. We'll now take public comments. Heather, you're up.
Okay, I have just a few members of the public with us. If you would like to make public comments, please press star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment? One more chance. Oh, here's one. Okay, telephone number ending in 6203. Please press star six to unmute yourself and please state your name and address.
And limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Jen Teller, owner of property at 712 Harbor Drive in Manistee. Just wanted to say thank you for allowing these Zoom meetings. They really help those of us that can't be in attendance, you know, just understand what's going on in the city and all of the issues that are before you. And we thank you for your consideration on so much. That's all I had.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? One more chance, just press star nine to raise your hand. Seeing none, Mayor, we're all set.
Thank you. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Tonight consent agenda items include: Approval of minutes, cash balance, revenue and expenses, consideration of ordinance 21-12 to extend the duration of provisional permits granted under Chapter 866 and provisional licenses granted under Chapter 867 of the City of Manistee, Michigan Cordified Ordinance. Notification regarding next work session, consideration of proclaiming April as Parkinson's Awareness Month, consideration of holding a run, the Pier 5 Run Walk on Saturday, August 14, 2021, from 8:30 PM through 11:00 PM, the race would take city streets from Veterans Memorial Park West to Fifth Avenue here around the Lighthouse and return to Veterans Memorial Park. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Mayor, can we pull the fun run off of that agenda item, please, at my request and discuss it later?
Sure.
Thank you. Other than that, I'll make that motion.
What item do you want pulled off?
The 5K run and the beer tent later.
5K run, okay. Is there, you made the motion with the, with the exception of the 5K run?
I did, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zielinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. We'll get into unfinished business, which would be the 5K run. I'm trying to find it on my agenda here. Unfinished business, consideration of holding a run, the 5K Run Walk on Saturday, August 14, 2021, from 8:30 PM to 11:00 PM, the race would take city streets from Veterans Memorial Park West to Fifth Avenue Pier around the Lighthouse and then return to Veterans Memorial Park. The run, the 5K Run Walk will be held on Saturday, April 14, and would commence at the Veterans Memorial Park with street closures of approximately one hour to include Fifth Avenue and Washington Street West to Monroe North on Monroe and to the westbound lane of Lake Shore Drive. After the race, the event, 10, was beer and non-alcoholic beverages, food, and live music. Memorial parking, the memorial park parking lot would be held. This event would be held from 8:30 PM to 11:00 PM. Is there a motion?
This is Mick Schmanski. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
We have a motion, a second, and any discussion?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, go ahead.
We're in the middle of another surge, another COVID surge, and I don't think we're at a point where we can be having beer tents and that kind of a gathering. I guess I'd like to have heard the Health Department say it's a really good idea, which I don't think they would sign off on, but for me, I think at this point, and we were the lead story on CNN today, Michigan, because of COVID, and I don't think it's time to start having these kind of events. We're gonna do that, then we're gonna be doing the Sleigh Bell, we're gonna do all the rest of this stuff, but I don't think it's time yet. That's my perspective. Thank you.
I have a comment. It's, this isn't an event that takes a whole lot of setup, right? I mean, besides the beer tent portion of it. Is there any way we could consider delaying this? I mean, how far out do they really need approval on this? Does anybody know?
Well, my guess is that it, they want to make sure that they've got permission so that they can move forward with the advertising. This is, you know, again, a fundraiser activity. And, you know, I'm hopeful that, again, as we get through July, things will start to have tempered down and we'll be able to get a little bit closer to normal. I know that I've got a meeting tomorrow with Sleigh Bell. We are expecting Sleigh Bell to go forward as, as it has been planned in the past. Obviously, there's, you know, there's still some, you know, questions out there, but we're hopeful that, that things will be back in, in a reasonable enough environment that we'll be able to proceed in December. August is a little bit more difficult. September is obviously difficult to determine. But, you know, we can, we can give them a tentative approval and then if things look bad, obviously, they don't want to say, they're, they're not going to go forward either. So we have to have some faith that they're going to do the right thing if, if the surge continues through July and August.
Mr. Taylor, could you shed any light on this subject?
Yeah, what I would recommend to council that they approve it conditioned on the event being able to meet the, or comply with whatever restrictions are set out by the Health Department. That's the way we've approached it in, in the past, is they can use the city facilities if they can follow, if they can abide by the rules that are in place at that time.
I think that's.
Does anybody know for sure, is everything for the Forest Festival canceled?
I haven't heard that any, that there's been any cancellations. I don't know that they've made their, their decisions yet. But I haven't heard that, that they have canceled. I'm gonna assume that it's probably going to be modified, but we'll have to just wait and see what, what they finally come up with.
This is Grabowski. I feel that we should wait for the Health Department to make a decision. And I go with Councilman Bachmann on this thing. I really don't see this beer tent. Any other concerns?
I, I think that we should make it so if the Health Department guidelines change, they need to abide by that and give them the okay for right now. I mean, I wouldn't cancel it right now because they're changing their regulations every other day, so I think that they should be allowed to go ahead and, you know, get this started and abide by the Health Department guidelines when that.
Mr. Taylor, do we need to amend the motion if we add something to it?
Yeah, the motion right now does not have the added provision that's being discussed regarding subject to complying with whatever the Health Department regulations are. And so if a council member wants to amend the motion to add that and there's support, then you can vote on that.
So this is Mick Schmanski, and I would amend the motion to approve with the caveat that they would have to be fully compliant with the Health Department requirements for gatherings of the nature and size that they are expecting.
Mr. Taylor, do we vote on that motion now or do we have to go back? We already have a motion on the table.
So you, you need support for the motion to amend, and then you'll vote on the motion to amend and then vote on the underlying motion.
Okay, so do we have, do we have a motion to amend?
I think Councilmember Schmanski made that motion and you're just looking for.
Okay, do we have a second?
I didn't hear. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
So who's gonna, who's gonna monitor that part of it? Who's gonna, I mean, the vet people or something, the city gonna check to make sure they're compliant or, I don't know, I don't know how that works, but I'd like to know thoughts on that.
Well, normally, I think it's the, the city that actually makes sure that they're in compliance before the event is held, at least I know for other events that I've been party to.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes, that's, we periodically check on them just to make sure that they're complying. In fact, we start that outreach in advance just to remind them of the, the restrictions that they have, that they have to meet, and that's the way we approach it.
Any other discussion or concerns? Hearing none, please take the roll on the amended motion.
Is this on, I'm sorry, is this on the, just the amendment or the?
It's not just the amendment.
Just the amendment, okay. Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zielinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmanski?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
No.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Now we need to take a vote on the original motion, correct?
Original motion has amended, yes.
Yes. Any discussion on the original, any further discussion on the original amendment with a motion, with amendments? The original motion with amendments. I'll get it out. Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmanski?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
No.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zielinski?
Yes. Okay, moving along. New business. Consideration of ordinance 21-13, ordinance 21- C, 21-13 was declared, will declare a state of emergency in the City of Manistee pursuant to MCL 15.63, and require meetings of City Council and all boards and commissions to be held remotely. At this time, council will take action to adopt ordinance 21-13. Is there a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion or, or concerns?
Grabowski here. Yes, I, I would like to get back to meeting in person. This remote, the stuff is getting old.
Anybody else?
Well, I, from what I understand, the challenge is, is that the Ramsdale is not going to be available through the month of May and June. Is that correct?
My, my understanding is that definitely they're going to not be available during April because they're upgrading the sound system. I think that project is going to take three to four weeks. And then into May, they are starting some programming, but I'm certain we can work around that. So the biggest concern is April, and this, this proposed ordinance does give some latitude for me to call in-person meetings.
So if I understand this correctly, we could, we could go back into in-person meetings in May once the Ramsdale is opened again?
If, if that was, if that was council's wish.
Okay.
I just have concerns that coronavirus with the new variances, we're unsure, we're just unsure of how fast it's spreading. This is a way for us to continue to do virtual meetings if necessary. That's my take on it. Anybody else?
Well, and I have to agree, depending on what the issues are, the last Planning Commission meeting, we would not have had a place big enough to hold all the people and be in compliance with District 10 requirements. So at least with the Zoom meeting, we were able to comply. As I understand, if you have a public meeting and you have to not allow somebody to enter, you have to cancel the meeting. I could be wrong, but that's how I understood it. So we could potentially have a problem, again, if a large audience did come in the near future. I think at the Ramsdale, we have a little bit more flexibility because that's a pretty good-sized space, but City Hall is pretty limited. I think, what, 25 guests is the most that we can expect in that building, so.
Yeah, I would think, I doubt if we could get 25 in there given the spacing requirements.
Anybody else?
There's no other building in town that we could use for meeting rather than this City Hall or the Ramsdale if they're not available.
Nothing comes to mind right now.
I, I got a question. So we kind of know, like, when we're gonna have a bunch of people show up or or a bunch of people, you know, depending on what's on the agenda. So if we've got, you know, or like a work session or something that doesn't have, like, you know, big, major things on it, couldn't we do the Ramsdale then? And then if it's something to where, you know, like the last Planning Commission meeting where we know there's gonna be a lot of people in attendance, switch that to Zoom?
If I could answer, I think the answer is yes, but that's why we need the amendment, because right now it, it will expire. We won't be able to continue to do a Zoom meeting if I understand it correctly. So we need to have the, this amendment in order to be able to have the option of having a Zoom meeting.
Well, the county has declared a state of emergency, I believe, until December of this year. We can fall under that, but this strengthens our position for having open meetings.
Okay.
Anybody else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Protem Schmanski?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
No.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zielinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance 21-09 to amend Chapter 1482 residential rental properties to the City of Manistee, Michigan, Cordified Ordinance. Ordinance 21-09 would amend Chapter 1482 by definition of property required the property not be in violation of Chapter 650 BLIT or any other city ordinance required that the property owner have valid homeowner insurance. Change the frequency of inspections from three years to two years. It adds language to revoke case, revocation of the certificate of compliance. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance 21-09, amending Chapter 1482 residential rental properties. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Grabowski.
I'll say. Yeah.
We have a motion, a second, and any discussion?
I just have a quick question. If they have to comply with the, the BLIT ordinance, they do not get their certificate until the, the BLIT is, is cleaned up, right?
Mr. Taylor?
Well, I was gonna defer to the City Attorney. I, I think that, that is absolutely correct, and I would add to it that if there is a violation of the BLIT ordinance, it could cause a revocation of their license as well.
Okay, the same thing with the, the homeowner's insurance, like if they don't provide proof of, like, the homeowner's insurance for the, the two years, every year?
They would, they would then not be issued a certificate of compliance, correct?
Okay.
Just a quick question, Mr. Taylor. Will they have to show proof of insurance every year or every two years?
I, I think it's just when their license is gonna come up for review. I, we didn't really identify that, but I think it's to get the issue, the initial issuance of the certificate of compliance and then when they're re-inspected. So I think it'd be every two years after that.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We've done nothing about doing an ordinance for short-term rentals. How are we gonna be sure that all the short-term rentals are registered? I mean, I understand we're changing it from three years to two, but how are we gonna really know until we've done that?
Well, the, if I might, at next week's workshop, council's gonna be presented with a draft, a very rough draft of a short-term rental ordinance to see if it comports with council's preferred means of wording, and then if it is, then we'll start the ordinance adoption process.
Okay, just didn't want to lose sight of that.
Nope, no, it's on our radar.
Anybody else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmanski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Zielinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a resolution supporting an update to the countywide park and recreational plan. The City of Manistee participate, participated in a previous creation of a countywide parks and recreational plan. These plans are submitted to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources and required, requires updating every five years. Networks Northwest will be coordinating the efforts to create an updated plan. The city cost to participate is $1,500. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution supporting and update the, supporting and update the Manistee County Wide Park and Recreational Plan and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Is there a motion?
Schmanski, I'll make that motion.
Grabowski, I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
I have some questions. There obviously, I'm gonna, I shouldn't say obviously. I'm assuming that when they talk about these parks and recreation, I'm not sure whether they're talking about maintenance of the parks themselves. I don't know what's, I, I don't know what this does for us other than we have one big plan for all of them, but I don't understand what the whole plan is. I need to know with, if maintenance is included, obviously, because the city has DPW staff and we maintain our own parks, so.
That, that would be, really be a separate issue. Their, their maintenance is not going to be spelled out on the recreation plan. It's just a vision for the next five years. And for the city to pursue, pursue certain grants, we have to have this recreation plan in place. As an example, we were looking for. As an example, we were looking for a DNR trust fund grant to redo the Veterans Memorial Park, North Riverfront Park. And we were unsuccessful on the latest round and we can't apply again until we have an updated rec plan. So if we want to pursue grant funding, we need to do this.
Okay, that's a good explanation. Thank you.
It's, it's the same thing also with the trail plan that they developed. If you remember, they put an extensive trail plan package together. And then they got to the point where they were ready to execute and the state says, oh no, sorry. Without this five-year consolidated plan, you can't even apply, let alone move forward. So there's a lot of, of other things that were kind of connected to having this five-year plan completed.
If I could also add some information, Mayor?
Go ahead.
The, um, the City of Manistee is one of the only local governments in the county that actually has its own Parks Commission and a Parks Department that completes the maintenance. And the city has always done this five-year plan in the past and, and we've just worked with our boards, commissions, and then usually hired a consultant to do this. Five years ago, I actually started about seven years ago. AES, working with the county, brought all the municipalities on the same page. They use the same format. And they helped eat, they helped everybody develop a recreational plan. They don't do it necessarily for us, but it's in the same format and it's very consistent with everybody else's. So the city Parks Commission and, and city staff will still have input on that plan. And this will simply just update it at a, honestly, a very low cost to us and then allow us, and it really creates a master plan for the entire park system. And then allows us to seek funding opportunities through the state to support that master plan.
Anybody else? Hearing done, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of granting an easement to Consumer Energy to allow the installation of a new service line to 440 River Street. The owners of 440 River Street needed an updated electrical service line. Consumer Energy has determined the most effective and efficient way to accommodate the request is to directional bore a path for a new service line from a point west of the city marina to 440 River Street. The, the proposed pass, path for the directional bore traverses city property and Consumer Energy requires an easement. At this time, council could take action to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the easement documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second and any discussion.
Mayor, they got to protect our sprinkler system and all that kind of stuff that we have buried on the property. How does that work? Is it just going to be marked, go around it, or do you know?
Mr. Taylor?
I believe consistent with any, any kind of excavation such as this or directional boring, they have to go through a missed dig.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I'll add to that, that this will be a directional drilled cable, so that should protect the sprinkling and obviously we'll mark all the other facilities that we have. And then at the beginning and ending of those bores, they're, they typically hand dig to identify existing features.
Any other comments or concerns? I just have one question, Jeff, maybe you can answer. There's a certain amount of space that we can't plant trees on when they do that? Or can't plant or can't do something? What, what's that all about?
Well, typically if you've got a buried electric line, they don't want trees planted over the top that could could damage their facilities or require removal of the vegetation if they ever have to upgrade those. It's pretty standard with wherever the city runs water and sewer lines, if they're not on city property as well.
So I, what I hear you saying is we have to be careful for the, the, that easement. We can't do much there. Is that going to interfere with any of the landscaping that we have?
I don't believe so. The proposed route included in your package shows that it is kind of tucked up tight to the, towards the sidewalk and then along the the circle bump outs that are between the Pine Street and the existing 440. So I don't think that'll be an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Are, are there any existing power lines in this location now, or is this a brand-new power that's going in?
This will be a brand-new power. I believe they're actually fed off of, across our property from the marina and along the riverwalk behind the Elks. So I know that consumers explored multiple directions and this was the easiest to upgrade the, the level of power to the building.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Hearing done, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Notice, communications and announcements. At each part of, at each regular part of a council meeting is a report from a cooperative agency, organization, or department. Today, we're going to hear from the Manistee Housing Commission. Clinton, here up. You got it unmuted, Clinton.
Okay.
There you go.
And if it's okay, I'd like to share my screen and put the PowerPoint up for us. It's checking, everyone can see my presentation.
Yes, we got it. I've got it.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity. We have a lot of exciting things to share. First, I'd like to begin by giving an update on our mental assistance demonstration program, our RED conversion, as you may have heard of it. Some milestones have taken place. In June of 2020, the Housing Commission and our developer, I'm with Development Corporation.
I'm not seeing your presentation. I think you have the wrong screen up. This is not your PowerPoint.
I've got it sharing on.
I'm seeing a screen with a bridge or something. I don't think that's your PowerPoint.
It's very Does that show up?
No, because I have your PowerPoint saved and that's not what we're just seeing a Merritt Network Incorp Grand Rapids box and it looks like your screensaver. Would you like me to share my screen? There you go. There it is.
You got it?
Yes, we got it now.
Okay, is it under your control or mine?
It's under yours.
Okay, all right. We received in June 2020 notification that we, excuse me, we submitted our application for the 9% low-income housing tax credit for the rehabilitation of Century Terrace and Harborview apartment buildings. And in December, we were awarded the 9% li tech and began the process of securing the finances by completing the pre-development due diligence activities such as the environmental assessments, construction inspections, and receiving firm commitments for the debt and equity used to finance the project. In January of this year, we hired a relocation consultant to advise and direct the temporary relocation of Century Terrace and Harborview residents that will be all, be occurring. We anticipate that the tenants will relocate to vacant units within each of our buildings or another one of our properties while work is being performed on their units. We are following, as required by HUD, the Federal Uniform Relocation Act in this process. And then in February of this year, we have submitted this plan to HUD and to the field office in Detroit for approval and we're awaiting their approval of the plan. In March, we had the first residence meeting Century Terrace and Harborview residents to discuss the project's current status and provide updates to our residents and to give a high-level overview of the relocation process. What's coming up on the horizon for us is that in May, we hope to be submitting our financing plan to HUD for their review and approval. Once we receive the review and approval, HUD will issue a conversion commitment that will allow us to move forward with the financial closing on the project. May through September, then, we're going to be working with, doing our lender and syndicator due diligence and get it completed. Work on and complete our construction plans and have them go out to bid. And in September, we're anticipating the closing of the project and the commencement of construction and, and moving from public housing to the RED conversion. So the units at Century Terrace and Harborview would now long to be considered public housing, but will be multifamily under the project-based rental assistance program. And then the big one in November of 2022, we anticipate that the construction and rehabilitation will be completed in both buildings, Century Terrace and Harborview. And I thought it'd be helpful to provide you with some information about the meeting we had with the residents of Century Terrace and Harborview. We received several good questions and we have provided the residents with answers. Resident asked, will I be able to return to my current apartment after the rehabilitation work is complete? And our answer is most likely. That is our plan. You never know, you might run into some issues and so we had that little caveat there. Will both properties still be targeting elderly and disabled populations? Most definitely, yes. Will work be completed in every unit? Yes. If I live in one building, perhaps Century Terrace, will I be able to return to my building? And that is our plan to have the people return not to, not just to their building, but to the unit that they're occupying right now. And who pays for the cost of moving me, a resident, from my current apartment to the temporary apartment? The Housing Commission puts the entire bill. Is everything moved, like furniture and bed and other belongings? Everything has moved. Will work be completed every unit? Yes, every unit. That people wonder about, do they have to remove everything from their unit? Everything has to be moved from the unit. What about the responsibility of packing everything up in the apartment and getting it ready for the movers? Not necessarily. Residents don't necessarily have to be responsible for that. Our plan includes the ability, if someone asks us and requests that our movers box everything up for them, we will do that. However, you know, we respect the fact that residents may say, we want to do our own boxing. We also have the ability for the movers to unpack their belongings when we move to the next temporary apartment and then back again to their permanent unit. Will the pet policy remain the same? Yes. What are the projected hours of construction? 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM? What's the difference between public housing and Section 8, which is the project-based rental assistance? Going to be very small changes for the residents, so hardly notice anything. It's more of a paperwork and reporting to HUD. Well, residents will find it actually easier on them than the public housing reporting that has to be done. Will air conditioning be installed, installed in every apartment? We haven't been able to determine if we'll have the financing to be able to include that in the project. Which building is going to be worked on first? We're going to be working on both buildings at the same time. How far in advance will residents be notified when it's time for displacement and relocation from their apartment? At minimum, residents will be given a 30-day notice for relocation. Will the work be done floor by floor? If so, how many units at a time I will be involved? We haven't made a decision yet if we're going to go floor by floor or stack by stack. And that's particularly important at Century Terrace. And the architects and engineers haven't made that final determination yet. If relocation is off-site, will the relocation be thoroughly cleaned? The location be clean and sanitized and pest-free? Compliance is working, yes. Everything will be working, everything will be clean, they'll all be part of the contract if we have to use off-site. Our goal is not to have to use any off-site rental units. Since the work will begin in September or October, will there be air conditioning in relocation site? We don't know that. Will the air conditioning unit that a person has in their unit right now fit in the new windows being installed? We don't know that, you know, either because that hasn't been determined yet. So what's going to happen about our family scattered sites that we have throughout the city, like on 12th Street and the Reach Park area? Soon after the closing of the Century Terrace and Harborview Apartments project, we will begin Phase 2, which is addressing the family and the scattered sites at that time. We don't have any determination yet. If we'll be rebuilding on property that we already own or relocating or what we're doing yet with that, but we need to begin addressing potential financing in a potential way of rehabilitating, actually rebuilding most of those units. So I want to thank you for the time to share with you and for the support that the city and the city council have given us and offer to answer any questions that you might have at this time. And I can stop sharing.
Are there any questions?
No question, but a comment, Clinton, that's a really exciting time for you. You must be super stoked. I'm excited to see how it comes together and I expect you'll bring us plans at some point in time and see what you're working on, correct?
Definitely. Soon as we get them nailed down, I'd be more than excited to share them with you all.
Thank you.
Clinton, I have a question for you. What happens to their mail?
Their mail will be available, like if they're moving from, I'm just going to throw some numbers out, unit 110 to 223. Okay, they're still on Century Terrace. Their address is still going to remain then as 110 because they're going back to unit 110. Mailboxes will still be there if they have to be temporarily relocated as they're redoing the lobby, they'll be set up in an area that are secure and available to the residents. So they, they won't lose the location of receiving their mail. Their address really won't change unless we have to move them out of the building. But the majority should be able to stay right in the building in which they're living as we're working on the units.
If their physical address has to change to another HUD home, own property, I'm I'm anticipating that this might start, I mean, work on this is going to happen in November of this year, correct?
That's anticipation, yes.
So that may, how does that going to work if? Are they going to, they're going to be able to keep their original address at Century Terrace or Harborview? No matter what, I'm just wondering how mail and ballots and all that's going to work at some point.
I will ask that we have a relocation meeting with our relocation consultant this coming Thursday and actually this Thursday. And I will ask our consultants on how that is handled and how the federal regulation requires that we handle that. So it's supposed to be smooth transition and smooth handling for everyone. And we don't want anyone to lose their mail or to disrupt any delivery of ballots and such like that. So I will make that note to ask on Thursday.
And you'll get back with us on the answers?
Yes, once I have answered, you know, on that, I will send email to Bad and have him distribute it to everyone.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Is, this is Mick Schumaski, is there a process for a resident to voice issues or concerns with either noise or dust from the construction?
Yes, that would be, you know, through our office and then working with the our developer, who is the construction company, you know, also. So we will address it that way. HUD regulations have limited the working time between eight AM and five PM. So it is fully anticipated that whatever noise that is required for remodeling is allowable between eight AM and five PM. During that time, you know, I'm sure that the, the construction firm will work at keeping dust down as much as possible. A lot of our not vendors, but construction workers and such are going to be local, you know, companies, our vendors. We're going to be continuing using like, like top line electric and others. So a lot of them are going to be local people that will be doing the work, whereas the A and E will be coming in from Commonwealth Development Corporation. Did that provide an answer for you?
Well, I'm, like I said, I really don't know the scope of some of the construction or the deconstruction work. But I know that, you know, again, in working with Habitat, depending on the types of tools that are going to be used, there is hearing protection that is required. And I'm just wondering if there's going to be any carryover noises like that for residents that are going to be in those buildings from eight to five.
I will, I will ask that, you know, to see what, you know, how that is addressed. I know that one option that relocation does provide is the ability to host folks that are, that are in the area of the construction offsite at some place during the construction time of eight to five and provide meals and other means of comfort and stuff and such like that. So let me ask them, you know, that also and get that detailed out.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Clinton.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You have a great evening.
You too.
Moving on, introduction to the physical year 2021, 2022 budget. Tonight, administration is prepared and the proposed 2021, 2022 physical year budget. The finance director will give a brief introduction of the city manager's budget recommendations to city council and the committee. Public hearing will, to review these budget recommendations and receive public input on them has been scheduled for Tuesday, April 20, 2021. Various work sessions have been established. A regular work session on Tuesday, April 13th. And an optional work session on Tuesday, April 27th. So tonight, I believe we're going to have an introduction. Mr. Taylor, Mr. Bradford.
Mayor, I'll start it off with some comments and then Ed Bradford will follow up and talk a little bit more in depth. First of all, council should have their budgets. I think they were distributed last Thursday afternoon and hopefully you've had a chance to at least give a cursory review of the, of the document. But I want to emphasize that the budget is balanced. It's realistic and addresses council priorities. And the council priorities is communicated to staff for money to remove blighted structures. We try to budget annually about 12,000. We're recommending in this budget that we increase it to 30,000. That additional money we're proposing to come out of the American Rescue Plan, the federal stimulus plan that's coming down to us. And then we also have money for Morden Park. We're budgeting $35,000 in the capital improvement plan for that. Council wanted us to make sure we meet the needs of the department in our department directors meeting to discuss the, the budget. It was, you know, everyone said they had what they needed to operate and continue to provide the same level of service. We're going to have more money for the motor pool. What we, Ed forecasted a somewhat of a bubble in the next couple of years. And so he came up with a plan to remedy that where we would use $100,000 a year for the next three years. That money would be either from fund balance and/or fund surplus at the end of the fiscal year to put that into the motor pool and solve that bubble. We've also included the car allowances for the police and fire chiefs. In fact, that's already in the works. We continue the street plan. Council wanted to make sure that we were on top of the cleanup of the Riverwalk and before the Memorial Day holiday and the other significant holidays, I've already met with the DPW director. And he's got people working on it and has been for about a week. So we're getting an early start on it. And then finally, council wanted a plan to replace the ladder truck. And we do have a conceptual plan in place to do so. So those are the, those are the priorities that staff emphasized and put time with. I wanted to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan. Now again, that's that stimulus money that's coming through the federal government to support local governments. We have very, very little information on it. We, in fact, we don't even know exactly how much we're going to get. Anything, any numbers that are out there are estimates and are not set in stone by any means. And we have very little guidance on how we can spend those funds. And we continue to reach out to individuals and organizations that might be able to enlighten us. And so far, as an example, the Michigan Municipal League knows nothing more than we do. So we're, we're in the dark as well as any other community in the nation. But we feel that based on the guidance that we do have, that we can use some of that money to, to kick off our housing initiative with Housing North with an allocation of $20,000 annually for the next three years. Because that American Resource Plan, those dollars have to be expended by the end of 2024. So it would fit in with that, that three-year window. We're also recommending $20,000 more to the Chamber for Economic Development. So they can further improve their efforts in that because that's one of the things that the AARP talks about is responding to negative economic impacts. And then that's where we get the additional money for the blighted structures. So those are, those are three areas that we feel confident, given what guidance we have, that we can focus those monies on. And as more information becomes available, we're certainly engaged with council on and to get their idea, your ideas on how you would like to see those funds expended over the next three years. But this is staff's first recommendation.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
Before we get too far into it, the blighted structures, I just need a little bit of clarification. So if the house burns down and there's no homeowner's insurance, we pay to have that house removed? Is that correct?
We could, and then we could go back on the property owner.
Okay, so do we actually collect from the property owner, like to put that money back into this fund or how does that work?
If we collect if we can, and then it just goes into the general fund revenues and then would be reallocated during the next budget cycle?
Have we collected from homeowners that we've had, like the house on Davis Street? Are we going to collect from that when it gets torn down or?
Well, we hope to. There's nothing certain right now. The fire chief is going through that process. He's made outreach to the state on that. So I mean, we, we're aware and we're moving on it, but there's nothing with any certainty yet. But these, what I'm talking about is the blighted structures is that every so often we get a structure that, that we have to tear down. We get a court order as an example to tear it down. That's what this money is geared for. Those severely bright, lighted structures.
But in, is the owner still responsible for that or? I just, I guess I'm confused on how that works.
George, could you weigh in on this a little bit?
Yeah, sure. Realistically, council person's home, if a person's structure is so blighted that it has to be demolished, they likely don't have the funds to collect from them. We do have the ability to get a lien against the property. But as, with that as well, the cost of demolishing a structure will way exceed the value of any lot in the city. And so I think from the perspective of council, I think you need to look at this as being money that you need to expend or authorize the city to expend to remove these structures. But I certainly would not count on recovering those monies.
Okay.
I mean, we, we take what steps we tend to try to do that. But realistically, I think it's unlikely in most instances that you recover.
Okay. Okay, you know, nothing annoys me more than people that don't take care of their property. So I was just, I just needed clarification on that a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. In terms of our pension program, our MERS program, we're at 74% funded and we're keeping up with the increased payments to MERS because of how they do their valuations and assumptions. So we're, we're happy we're doing that. The fund balance at the end of this proposed budget would be 20.2%, which is above, slightly above where the council wants to be. So we're, we're happy to be able to provide that. Our general fund operating millage remains unchanged, this proposed, in this proposed budget as does the millage for refuse. And then, you know, finally, before I turn it over to Ed to get a little bit more into the budget, I just want to thank our staff and let council understand how much hard work they've done in putting this budget together. They, they all submitted very lean, lean budgets. There were, they addressed needs and an occasional want. And we're willing to take cuts to help somebody, some other department. So they did a really good job, sharpened their pencils, put it together. And I think I'm safe in saying that this year was relatively painless when it came time to make cuts. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ed for a little bit deeper dive.
Thank you, Ted. I'm going to share a little screen here. Can people see the budget document?
Yes.
You can see it, yeah. So I'm going to do the budget a little bit differently this year than we have in the past. Hopefully it'll be effective and be helpful for the people that get to watch this on TV too as well. I'm going to actually run through the document itself rather than put together a separate presentation. A couple reasons for that. One is it just helps when we're actually going through the budget and reviewing it over the next month. But also it gives the public, you know, get a little bit into the budget and all the information's the same. It's just so the budget's broken into several different sections. There's a, there's a comprehensive table of contents, obviously, at the beginning of it. And the document that's on the website is all hyperlinked with these links on the left side. So you can go to whatever section you'd like. The budget overview section talks about, you know, how the budget is put together and the different sections, the general fund, different component units, enterprise funds and things of that nature. One of the things that I wanted to go start with a kind of a budget highlights. And this year's total budget is almost $26 million, which is almost an $11 million increase over the prior year. And the reason for that increase isn't that we greatly meant up our operating costs, but it was all capital projects that we're doing. And in particular, the Product Action Program, where the dollar is $13 million and paying for that big project. So this section here in the budget, the budget highlight, it talks about just a general overview of the different things. General fund is about a quarter of our spending this year. Sewer utility, because of all those capital projects is about 45%. And then the streets are about 10% of the total budget and that's that we can go through the, the other fund. So this part is just a general overview of the budget. Ted spoke about the council priorities. There is a section in the budget that talks about that and you can see that on, on this page. It talks about all of the different priorities that are identified by council in the work session earlier this year. We'll talk a little bit about these, a little more about these. Next section of the budget are budget issues. This section talks about our operating funds and special revenue funds. Kind of some of the challenges that we have. And to go further, some of those issues are also discussed in what we call our budget issue pages. And I would like to touch briefly on each of those because I think those are really kind of an important part of the, of the budget and things that council and general public need to be aware of. So the first one is the, is the COVID-19 pandemic. And, you know, last year, this time, we were all transitioning to remote work and didn't really know where things were going to go. And you know, a lot more a year later, but as Ted mentioned, you know, Michigan has turned into another COVID hotspot. So there still is a lot of uncertainty with this pandemic and how long it's going to play out. I think people are hopeful that it would be resolved or get back to normal, you know, maybe by fall. But it's something now like that, it's possibly stretched out longer than that. So just the thing that Ted mentioned about the American Recovery Plan, ARP as we build in the budget is that, you know, the estimates are still preliminary as to how much money we get over a couple of years. We're free to spend it, but you know, I've seen anywhere from 600,000 to a million. So if you take the lower end of that number, you know, and that would come in two separate payments, one each year. So it's, it's a lot of money. It's significant, but it's not, you know, huge, huge dollars, given all the stuff that the city does. And as Ted mentioned, there's going to be more guidance coming out on that. For the discussions all about how the funding can be spent.
And you're getting kind of low. We can hardly hear you.
Yeah.
Talk slower.
No, louder.
Louder.
Okay. First impressions are that it's not going to be as easy to spend as maybe was anticipated because there are some strings attached to it or some limitations. Next item, I talked about blight. This was a topic last year. We just kind of continued that discussion. We've done a little bit to address blight in terms of city operations, including amending an ordinance to make it easier to enforce. We've increased money for demolition. We've broken the city into districts with better enforcement and education. And we think that that's going to pay dividends in the, in the blighted enforcement. Ted did mention the motor pool sustainability and I want to spend a little bit of time. Ted did mention the motor pool sustainability and I want to spend a little bit of time talking about this. Um, the charts that you see here on the screen show. The variability in the motor pool reserves from when it was implemented to today. And as you can see, it's fluctuated quite a bit over the years and that is by design because the motor pool. Is uh, set up a buffer of the operating funds from big swings in equipment purchases, which aren't always kind of a linear function. Depending on well, how much equipment needs to be bought and what the costs are. But on our ten-year rolling forecast that we update every year, what we're finding is that. Because of the types of equipment and when they were purchased in the past and what they're used for life, where we are running into this. This lack of cash or lack of reserve that I would call a problem. There's another graph that I'll show you. Um, part of that also was, was anticipated, you know, as early as two thousand seven, two thousand and eight. And one of the solutions for that was going to be to slowly increase the motor pool contributions over time. Uh, which we have tried to do, but we were hit with the two thousand and eight great recession. And as a result, we weren't able to always raise those contributions as quickly as we would have liked. So the chart on the right shows what those contributions would have been had they been increased by five percent annually as compared to what they are today. Um. If you look at this next chart here, this is what I'm talking about with the bubble. Uh, and what we're proposing is to supplement the motor pool with a hundred thousand dollars over the current fiscal year and the next two fiscal years from the general fund. To eliminate this area in red on the bottom here and get it to a sustainable point. Um, and you know, our ten-year forecast shows that it's in really good shape going out and obviously this will change as equipment purchases. Change over time and, and you know, things will always go according to plan. But it does eliminate this bubble and, you know, we've tried all kinds of techniques to do that in terms of um. The, the size of the fleet, the expected lifespan of the fleet, deferring replacements, stretching out the life. Finding more efficient equipment, but we've just gotten to the point where that's not. Gonna be able to continue over the amount of cash and food and so on. That is what is suggested in the budget. Um, and then we also talked about the fire department and the ladder truck and the pumper and. Uh, the last pumper or the last aerial ladder truck was paid for by a millage. Um, and the motor pool ordinance specifically excludes big fire department apparatus from motor pool. So the preliminary plan to fund the replacement of these would be to stretch the life of the aerial truck out a little bit. And make it line up with uh the life of the pumper. Uh, so that both of those can be replaced at the same time through a voted millage, which is allowed to do. Um, and, and combine those into one ballot initiative. We'll also be exploring options of partnering with other local units and municipalities to see if there's any way to do some cost sharing. But that's really the only way to pay for equipment that costs this much money. Um, between the two of them, it's. Would be close to two million dollars at the time that they would be purchased. The, the plan for that is kind of outlined in this section of the budget. Um, wanna talk a little bit about uh, about our employees. There's a section there that talks about our employee groups and the employees and the wages. The benefits. Um, employment is steady at fifty-five and a half. Uh, it has the thirteenth office of the police and fire. Um, we have our normal inflationary adjustments and stuff in places for wage and benefits, but. What the real uh highlight of the employee benefit budget is the MERS contribution. And Ted touched on that, but I want to go into a little bit deeper dive. Um. We always make the full contribution to our MERS retirement and over the past five or six years. Done multiple reforms to the pension system, including lowering, lowering multipliers for new hires. Uh, eliminating defined benefit pensions for non-union staff moving forward. Um, making sure that we have modest, that we don't have any cost of living increases in any of our groups. Um, and through really no fault of the city because we have always paid a hundred percent of our required contribution. And in fact, uh, as MERS has changed some of their actuarial calculations, we've uh. We've paid the full amount of that impact in year one, rather than spreading that out over five years. Uh, in, in an effort to help stabilize our funding. But what happened this year is the full impact of the actuarial assumption on rate of return. From seven and three quarters to seven point two five was phased in or was experienced and. Our MERS contributions went up thirty-five percent and almost a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's a significant part of the increase in our budget this year. Um, but we were able to and are required to fund that. The one thing that is a silver lining in all of this is now that that hit, so to speak, has been taken. We're gonna start to like experience uh smaller increases in, in the future years. And that's particularly true because we've had excellent portfolio performance over the last two years uh in the MERS investment portfolio. And we've had a lot of new hires that have lower multipliers than, than maybe the oldest people have. So we're hopeful that moving forward, uh, this percentage at seventy-four percent stabilizes and that our contribution increases start to slow down. The other thing I want to point out is MERS has changed how they amortize the unfunded pension liability. So. They have a date certain where you're supposed to get your fund up to a hundred percent and that's what these charts show. But over time, our contributions are gonna go up a hundred percent. It will get to the hundred percent where they would like to see. And that is because they no longer have an open-ended amortization. They actually have a mortgage, so to speak, that you have to pay off. You can see, once you get to that hundred percent funded out in, in the mid twenty thirties, then the contributions drop off. Because they're no longer paying for the unfunded accrued liability and they're paying the normal cost of providing that pension benefit. Um, the next section of the budget, city indebtedness. Uh, this is just useful information if you're wanting to look at, you know. What debt that the city has out there. You can see the vast majority of our debt, over three quarters of it is uh, is revenue bond debt. And uh, it's primarily sewer. Eighty-two percent of that is sewer debt. So that's not surprising given the fact that we have the ongoing sewer separation and the whatever corrective action program. And on pages down here more, it gives you the details of that. Including what's, what are we going to pay to off, original principal and any of those details. You know, the big thing I'll point out is, is we've added this, this line down here. Sorry, which is the, the eighteen million of the rural development phase two. And we just closed on that at April first. So we're all closed on that. On, and uh, we'll, we'll see some dirt getting moved on that project soon. Um, I'd like to go into the general fund a little bit. Uh, the budget for the general fund is about six point eight million. Uh. And again, it includes a hundred thousand dollar uh investment in the, in the motor pool fund. So it is balanced without that, without that investment. Um. The overall percentage increase without that hundred thousand is about a five point four percent, which is bigger than what it normally would typically be. You see that around four percent year over year. Um, but again, we get to have the big MERS contribution uh increase this year and that's. That's the explanation for a lot of that. Plus the seventy thousand dollars of ARP money that's built into the budget for fund expenses. So that explains those differences. Um, some, some highlights uh on the expense uh around the revenue side. Our taxable value had very strong growth this year on pre-. It's the most since the great recession. That's really positive. And I think all the real estate professionals uh would, would agree that it's a hot wheel. So that's been really helpful. Uh, we are gonna, you know, have some marijuana revenues uh coming in and, and overall we have strong revenue growth. Uh, on the expense highlights, uh, some of the things that I wanted to talk about were um. Just some, some kind of significant differences from last year. Uh, the legislative budget, there's no deer call, so we're able to be away with that. Um, the manager's budget is a little bit higher this year because we have to assume uh benefits. Benefit levels for the new managers starting July first, which we don't know yet. So we kind of always assume conservative as we are now. For several years now, the police department has been trying to get their department accredited and it's a, it's a pretty lengthy process, kind of involved. Require software and, and some consulting and we're able to work that into the budget for sure. But no chief glass is very happy about that and it's, it's a best practice. So it was good that we had to do that. We also have uh some money slotted for new body cams for the police, um, although we are going to be going for local revenue sharing both then. And again, that's a best practice for the, the law enforcement. Um, the public work has uh some money slotted to hopefully uh finalize the underground storage tank issue that we have at the city garage. And I'm putting graphing and ordinance during the last monitoring and closing that out with the state. And that's been going on for well over twenty years. So it would be nice to kind of get that behind us. The general part of the general fund budget has some money to uh replace and upgrade some of our wireless network infrastructure, which is starting to. Exceed its useful life and is critical for lots of city operations. So we're gonna be doing that in conjunction with the water and sewer. So we do have a lot of wireless equipment as well. That'll, that'll get looked at thoroughly this, this whole year. And finally, um, we always like to talk about appropriations and there are some, some changes in the appropriations this year. Um, Ted mentioned uh an increased allotment for the Manasseh Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, um, you know. Particularly in areas that are hard hit by the pandemic and which are also important to the overall economy of the area. A contribution to housing more. Those are both uh increased amounts from last year. And then last year, the uh entities that we are cooperating with were. Across the board, they boost. And I think all of them have assets that funding get restored with the exception of alternative preparedness. Overall, it's about a fifty thousand dollar increase. Uh, the bulk of that forty thousand dollars is uh, a, a larger allocation to the chambers, kind of some larger. Or new allocation to housing more. The rest of it is spread amongst people. Um, moving on from the general fund, uh, once again, we have the downtown development authority budget incorporated in the city's budget. And I want to mention that there'll be representatives of the DDA at the budget work sessions and the public hearing to be able to answer any questions. The DDA worked very diligently this year to, to give us a document that was a little simpler and uh, you know. Thoroughly documented and made sure that it was covering everything. Um, we do have that incorporated in, you know, their narrative, this language that they provided to the city. And then the actual budget itself was in here. And um, I'll let them speak to that as part of the ongoing budget process, but I will note two things. The DDA budget always uh anticipates spending down some of their fund reserves to perform priorities in. Uh, taxing and financing plan and development plan. It also proposes letting the one point five million dollar bond to fund some priorities. Um, I'm sure they'll talk more about that, that just by approving your budget, it does not approve that bond because the city ultimate has to approve that bond to the debt. So there'll be more to come on that in terms of, you know, planning and what projects and, and a further discussion. But that is noted in their budget for that. Something that they would like to pursue this year. Um, moving on to the uh.
Could we stop for a minute? Really? This is, we can barely hear you.
Really? Okay.
Yes, it's very annoying and I, we don't know how to stop you. I, I know you want to get through this, but honestly, it's. The, the volume on your speeches is like fifty percent of what we've heard everybody else speak at. So I don't know what the problem is.
Speak, council member Beaton, if I can fix that real quick, if you're giving just a minute. I'm not sure why that's happening, but.
Yeah, it's.
You see if I can fix that. I'm not sure that there's gonna be a simple fix, so I'll just speak really loud. Is that better? Can you hear me a little better?
That's better. Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question about the DDA. Did I really see that on the screen that it went from twenty thousand to forty thousand?
Yeah.
For the Chamber of Commerce, correct?
I think I need more explanation on that when you have a s- time because. And I just saw it. I wasn't able to react to it because I couldn't hear you so well.
We'll certainly uh go through all of that council member Beaton um in more detail when we have our work sessions.
Okay.
Um.
Jesus Christ.
For the enterprise funds on the water and sewer, the biggest issues here really are uh the, the projects for. The construction of the wet weather corrective action program. And that's gonna be a huge management task for Jeff and for the Spicer Group. Um, I say that's. Gonna get started here soon and the construction will last over eighteen months, but. Uh, we're able to still fund those projects with our normal three and a half percent inflationary increase. Well, that's very positive for uh, for the enterprise funds and also for the taxpayers and the rate payer because it's not a, a huge increase to do that. Um, on the water side, they're gonna continue to explore for lead service lines, if there are any, and try to get those replaced. Um, there are some water main replacement projects over the next few years. So just a lot of capital and uh investment in both the water and the sewer fund. Um. Oil and gas fund, uh, we've had outstanding performance, investment performance the last couple of years. And because of that, uh, we were able to continue to, to spend off money to the capital improvement fund. We're anticipating a little under four hundred and twenty thousand dollars this year that will go from the oil and gas. Through the capital improvement fund and that's based on the uh phasing down of the spending rule that was approved earlier. So that's all positive. Um. For the street funds, uh, I do want to quickly talk about those because we're continuing to maintain the streets. Uh, this chart shows the condition of all streets in twenty twenty. Uh, you can see about forty-five percent are good, forty-five percent are poor, and there's a chunk in the middle that are fair of about ten percent. And you can see over the last five years, the amount of good streets has increased considerably. From eight point four miles to about twenty-one miles and the number of poor streets has gone down somewhat. So we're moving in the right direction. I know not as fast as maybe some people would like to see it, but it, uh, it certainly is, is made some progress. And you can see from the transportation improvement plan, there's a significant amount of impulssment planned over the next five years. But particularly in twenty twenty-one, uh, there's a total of about um, total project cost of about five point four million. A little over one point one million is coming out of the street funds because it's directly related to streets. Rest of that comes out of the utility funds to, to fix the water and sewer names underneath it. Well, we showed both of those this year. That's a change. Just to give an idea of how much is being leveraged and the scope of that because the water and sewer utilities do pay. For a portion of the asphalt that's getting replaced based on standard engineering practices and techniques. Um. You can see we have, you know, projects in both major and local streets and typically it flips from year to year uh depending on um. The timing of stuff and also the time grants. Uh, on the refuse fund, um, the refuse fund is kind of entering a new chapter with the new contract with. Uh, the waste hauler and how they're uh switching the, we switch it over to just totes and bags. So we need a year under our belts to kind of get a handle on how that's gonna look from a revenue and expense side, but. Indications are everything is proceeding smoothly. And uh, we're able to get by this year with just a three and a half percent inflationary increase. Whereas in the past, it's been much higher than that um to offset not only. The cost of the increased uh contract with the waste hauler, but the fact that our tax base wasn't growing. But now that our tax base is starting to recover, less of fees need to come from user fees and the rate of increase can slow slightly. This chart shows that about sixty-five percent of the revenue for the sewer, the refuse fund is from user fees and only thirty percent from taxes. And uh, I don't know, over a decade ago, that was probably closer to uh the other, the other way around, almost two of its taxes. So we haven't raised the millage rate, uh, but we have had to raise additional revenues and that's been done in the, in the form of user fees over the years. Um, we talked about the motor pool fund a little bit in terms of getting some sustainability for that. I would like to talk about uh the, the purchases that are scheduled for the motor pool. And this year we have uh a tandem plow truck. Um, a pickup truck, leasing of a skid steer loader, which is very cost effective. Replacing a hot patch trailer, replacing one patrol car for the police department. Replacing the fleet or the detective vehicle for the police department that was pushed back from last year. Uh, replacing the ambulance, which was budgeted last year, but isn't gonna be delivered until probably July. So it could be still possible to be. So it could be still possibly be paid for in the current fiscal year, but I slotted it in here just in case it slipped a little bit. And then uh, one pickup and one more. Um, and it these are financed through a combination of cash leads or installment purchase contracts. Um, but the the takeaway on the motor pool is that the ten year projections with that infusion of capital will put this on a much more sustainable path. Last thing I'd like to talk about are the capital improvement fund. And this chart in the budget shows uh, where the spending of the capital improvement fund goes. It's very evenly distributed, uh, about twenty eight percent goes to streets, uh, this year, thirty nine percent is going to buildings, which is higher than any in years past. Marina's about fifteen percent, parks about eighteen percent. Then in terms of the types of spending, we've got about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that's obligated for debt. We have a hundred and forty five thousand dollars of what I'll call repeat spending, which is things for streets, local streets, and things for the marina. So those are ongoing annual costs, aren't particularly debt, but go to help support projects and other debt. And finally, about a hundred thousand dollars of new spending. And the new spending is going to go for the previously mentioned Morton Park playground improvements. Um, some initial funding potentially to replace the or fix the deteriorating pillars at the Ramsdale Theater. Um, the third project is to do some work on the police department, including replacing the flooring uh, and also building an armory room. Uh, another project is seal coating the Memorial Park parking lot. And finally, a little bit of money is would be going to finishing the Marina patio project. Um, the last thing that I want to talk about is just kind of summing up what, you know, you'll see in the budget as you go through it. As Ted mentioned, it's a, it's a very solid budget, we think it's realistic. Um, there's still our COVID nineteen pandemic uncertainties, but we think that uh, those are manageable. Uh, we believe the budget has hit all the priorities that council has laid out and has addressed a number of key issues. Um, again, there's a large, large amount of capital project, which is just an investment back in the well being of the community out of that and and how we're able to fund those. Um, and finally, I think uh, you know, there'll be a lot more on the American Recovery Plan as we move forward over the next few months. And there'll have to be conversations about where those funds uh, are appropriately spent. So I want to apologize for the audio issue, we'll try to get that corrected for the next meeting, but uh, normally, we just do an overview and then uh, we go through the budget at the at the upcoming work session, so that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. I guess we'll be ready on Tuesday, April twentieth with a lot of questions and everybody will have an opportunity to voice their concerns. Is there any comment from council at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to concerns and comments. Citizens comments, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance via phone shall be recognized by the city clerk for comments limited to five minutes, letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Each person in the very virtual waiting room will be called on the last four digits of their telephone number. Heather, do you want to go do that and then move on to officials and staff and council members, please?
Sure. So I have two members of the public um, out there, so I'm just going to call each of you and give you an opportunity to speak. The first one is telephone number six two zero three. If you would like to make a comment, please press star six to unmute yourself. Again, that was telephone number ending in six two zero three, if you have a comment, um, you can unmute yourself now by pressing star six. Okay, and then um, there's one other person in there, uh, Mr. Oh, is it Ali? Do you have a comment? If so, you can unmute yourself now. Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to officials and staff. City manager? You're muted then.
Councilmember should have um, received an invitation to attend a workshop on April fifteenth that is put on by the MSU Coastal Research Group, runs from eight thirty to noon. It's going to be virtual, uh, so if you haven't registered, uh, please do so if you're interested. If you are having problems registering, please um, reach out to my office, that's all I have.
City attorney?
Nothing Heather, thank you.
Finance director?
I think I fixed my mic problem, is like, can you hear me louder now?
Yeah.
Too little, too late.
Everything you just said.
No, but I will say, council, I will be happy to go one on one. If anybody has questions, please feel free to call, email, and we can go through that. And I I apologize for the audio issue, but I think I've got it fixed.
Okay, great.
Uh, DPW director?
I have nothing Heather.
Police department?
I have nothing Heather, thank you.
All right, fire chief?
Nothing Heather, thank you.
A city engineer?
Nothing Heather, it's time, thank you.
Councilmember Bachman?
Nothing Heather, thank you.
Councilmember Beaton?
Uh, not at this time, nothing.
Uh, councilmember Sullivan?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes, I'd like one thing. Ted, how much would it take to do something with those islands on Cherry Street? They're all banged up, the trees are broken in half. Um, they're all damaged from the plows hitting them all winter, do we really need these islands? They're kind of a waste almost. I mean, I know they were put in by a previous mayor and she begged for them, and now I think that there there are hindrance. There is that, we can do with them.
Jeff, would you like to speak to that?
Well, I can, and the reason why the islands were put in there is if you can remember back, uh, I think we did that project in ninety eight. Um, and the road was absolutely terrible, but people were traveling down that road probably at a higher rate of speed than they were down thirty one. So the sidewalks and the islands were put in as a traffic calming um, strategy to try to slow the traffic down to, we were afraid that if we gave brand new pavement, um, things would get even worse. We do put up posts um, at the corners of the islands every year so that the plow drivers can try to see them, but it's also the worst uh, drifted areas that we have. And um, we can do some internal stuff that doesn't take special budget items to do some curb repair work. And if there's, I saw that there was one tree that got hit by a pedestrian car, or not a pedestrian, but a a a a car, and we can work on getting that replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Shemansky?
Nothing at this time Heather, thank you.
And Mayor Zalinski?
I have nothing at this time. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Now, do I have a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second, thank you everyone, have a great evening, stay healthy, we're adjourned.